Welcome, welcome on this brisk fall evening and thank you for joining us here at UCMR. I'm going to reconvene into regular session at 7:00 PM. We have no announcements out of closed session. We have been in closed session since 5:45 PM. So we're going to progress with the flag salute. Dr. Fassett, will you introduce our guests?
You bet. Thank you, President Martin. So I'd like to call Sadie up to the mic and Zoe up to the mic, and I'm going to read a nice statement about the two of you from your principal. So Sadie is a sixth grader at Shell Beach Elementary School. She enjoys playing volleyball and piano. Her favorite subject is math. While not at school, she enjoys spending time with her friends. And Zoe's also a sixth grader at Shell Beach Elementary, and Zoe loves dance, volleyball, and hanging out with other friends. She loves the US History class and enjoys being part of the Leadership Program at school. Girls, thank you for being here tonight. It's now your turn to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, goodness. Well, it's pretty special when your principal nominates you to be here. Come on, stand up.
Camera.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Take all that leadership. Okay, my name, Dad, is upside down. No problem. That's a bad omen. All right, we're going to move on to Communications. Student representative to the board. We're going to start off with Napulmo High School, Nora Reed. On crutches, no less. She is fearless.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Nora Reed, as you said, representing Napulmo High School as our ASB president. I haven't been able to attend this year thus far because I've had volleyball games every Tuesday, but clearly that's not happening anymore. October was a big month for ASB. Of course, we had homecoming, which is preceded by a week filled with dress-up days, lunchtime activities, a rally, of course, the football game, and our class competition, which went really well. FFA also had a dance this month as for their October meeting, which was our Halloween dance. I think they had pretty good turnout, and that one's always super fun. They have a costume competition and all that good stuff. We also had various other LTAs, including a donut day for National Donut Day. Our canned food drive is starting this month as well. That'll go through the month of October. And Staff of the Month also went well this month. Football and volleyball won our leagues. Football is still competing in CIF and is going to Madera this Friday, and cross-country is in CIF as well and competing on Thursday. Winter sports are starting up, including wrestling, basketball, and soccer, all having tryouts this past week. Senior nights for all of our fall sports went well as well. We had Red Ribbon Week this month, which was two weeks after homecoming, I believe, and that came with LTAs, as well as our Tube Club doing drug awareness during the week. Our Link Crew held Aguafrescas in the quad, which is always very exciting to our students, so we gave them free drinks for lunch. Our Chicanos Studies Club is holding a Dia de los Muertos celebration in the quad as well, which should be coming up soon or it happened, I'm not sure. Um, I don't know. Anyways. Link Crew is also running our Titan Bolt Store, which is going well. We haven't been able to do it because of football CIF on Fridays, so our advisor's gone with cheer, but we should be doing it this coming week, not on Friday. We had a mock WASC accreditation, which Deno told me went well, so we're all good on that front. Today, we had a Leadership Development Day hosted at Napulmo High School. Oro Grande was there, as well as Tascadero and Coast Union. This was hosted by CASL, which is the California Association of Student Leaders, and we hope to attend their conference in April as well, which is always a lot of fun. The end of the third progress mark is on the 15th, and I'll be telling you the privileges about that in a second. And we also had Maldoun at UCLA this weekend, which went great. That's my club. And we had seven delegates compete at the biggest conference on the West Coast. So back to the privileges that will be starting next week. We're going to do a Hang Ten Tuesday, and students who have no missing assignments, currently passing all their courses with a CER better, and have teacher permission will be given extra dismissal from second period. We'll have special lunch for all of our classes on different days, and we'll have a sixth-period early dismissal for those same criteria, as well as a raffle for gift cards and sweat. I look forward to presenting to you next month. That's all I have.
Well, we're glad you made it. Thank you.
I did.
Landon Pinmar from Central Coast New Tech High School.
All right, hello, everyone. I'm Landon Pinmar. Elizabeth was unable to make it here tonight due to Tech Week for Napulmo Theater Production, but obviously you're in luck because I'm here. So again, my name's Landon Pinmar. I'm our Vice President, and I'm very excited to share with you all the updates on our past month's events, as well as our school's upcoming activities. So starting off with our culture, we had our annual Fall Feast on October 7th, where students had a day to eat tri-tip, pizza, salads, fruit, you name it. They've also participated in various activities. And we also held a rally to boost school spirit in NHS Gym and had a student band play during Feast. The reason we have Fall Feast is to reward all of our students for completing their first projects of the year and to keep them motivated and excited about school. We would like to thank all the parents that volunteered to serve food and who donated to Fall Feast. On October 26th, we had our annual Homecoming Dance with a theme "Under the Stars", which set a record for the highest student attendance of a homecoming dance ever. Our ASB students planned and decorated for the dance, and the two CTE Digital Media Arts students were able to DJ for that dance. We also held a week full of spooky LTAs, leading up to Halloween, where we hosted a costume contest at lunch. And lastly, we had our second Student Senate Meeting last week and received a lot of feedback on our Fall Feast, the rally, homecoming, and our Spirit Week. We ended the meeting by playing team builder games to create a stronger bond between our student senators and to make them feel more comfortable. The next large school event we have is our Do Be Nice Week, which is December 9th through 13th. This is our week-long celebration of kindness and a platform for anti-bullying awareness. During this week, students complete fun activities that focus on character building and creating a culture of acceptance and kindness at our school. Next, for some of our community and academic events, we are hosting our annual Math Art Night on November 14th from 5:00 to 7:30 PM, where math students from all grades create art pieces that incorporate mathematical concepts and equations. As always, we would love for you to attend, so if you're interested, please reach out to our wonderful Principal, Ms. Butler. Our ninth graders completed their This Is Me presentation, and we are so proud of them. They presented in front of the entire ninth-grade class, upperclassmen, and teachers. And they are now working on their revolutionaries-on-trial project in their World Studies class to learn more about courtroom proceedings and famous historical figures. In this project, students have the opportunity to prosecute or defend a historical revolutionary in front of a jury. And they are also working on their Health Fair project in Biology, which will be held on December 16th. Our 10th graders are just starting their Chemistry Clue project. In this project, they learn about the periodic table and use it to solve clues and solve a mystery. This year, they are trying to solve the mystery of the ASB Butcher paper going missing, which is an item that ASB needs to create posters for our rally. Our juniors just completed their Salon Night project and are starting their Do Something About It project. In this project, they choose an important issue that they have wanted to change in their community and research it and propose how to create a positive change for people in local government. Our seniors are preparing for their Life After New Tech with College and Career Prep, and they are working on presentations about their college research and plans for the future, while also continuing to submit college applications. Many of them have also just completed their Egg Glider project in Physics, with the winning glider going 35 feet. They're also working on their annual Poetry Night, which will be on December 18th from 6:00 to 8:00. Lastly, our recruitment for the years 25 to 26 have began. Our application for admission opened on November 4th, and our Link Crew is preparing for middle-school visits and parent information nights. Our first parent information night is December 5th at CCNTH. Lastly, all of our fall sports, band, and theater are in full swing. Our Historical Artists Improv Troop just had their first show on October 26th, and their annual Give Back Show is December 19th in the NHS Forum. The NHS Theater Company has their first show, Heroes and Villains, this weekend, November 15th, 16th, and a matinee on the 17th. There is also a band performance on the 17th. New Tech athletes have continued to participate in fall and winter sports, with many of our students doing well in tennis, water polo, and volleyball. Thank you guys so much for listening. I hope our president misses another meeting, so I can see you guys again soon. And have a happy holiday season. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Ms. Butler, I think you better take Landon on those recruiting visits. I think he'd be a great recruiter for you. All right, we have Daniel Wenzel from AGHS.
Good evening. I am excited to be back presenting all of the amazing but very busy things we've been up to at Oro Grande High School. So to get right into it, to begin with, our Leadership Program is coming off a very busy October, where we had our Homecoming Week, as well as our Homecoming Dance, where we served over 1,200 students. Today, as stated previously, we traveled to Napulmo, and with four other Leadership Classes, we received Leadership Development Training. We had our first-ever caramel apple cart appreciation event for our staff. Leadership students went around during lunch and delivered caramel apples to our staff and teachers. All three Leadership Classes are beginning to work on our next Spirit Week, which is 'Tis the Season Week, where on Friday, we have our Winter Spectacular, where we host elementary school students and their families, and our clubs and programs have games, food, crafts for all those attend. Next, I'd like to share with you the updates on our clubs and programs. AGHS just received a special honor from Special Olympics, as we have been officially recognized as a unified champion school. This shows our commitment to providing multiple opportunities for our Special Olympic athletes. AGFFA is currently working on their Christmas Tree fundraisers. They have 250 trees for sale with AG Mechanics projects, as well as wreaths on sale as well. FFA also has a BIG competition for freshmen and a water-quality team competition this week at the sectional contest. Our Theater Department is preparing for their fall musical production of Into the Woods, with the rest of the VPA Department getting ready for the Carol of the Arts, where band, choir, and drama will be performing, and art classes having the works on display in the Clark Center. And now in Academics, 526 students this year plan to take an AP test. This statistic has risen about 50 students from last year. AGHS is on target to give 1,054 exams this spring. We are proud to announce that last year, 82% of our students got a three or higher, which is a passing mark. We offer more AP courses than any other high school in Slow, Monterey, and Santa Barbara County, and we recently found out that AGHS qualified as a Bronze AP Honorable School. We had nearly 70 students volunteer to work at the polls last week, with over half of them being avid students. AGHS has committed to creating an individualized student learning experience in physical education. Our PE Department was highlighted in a recent article published by PLT4M, which is a software and curriculum provider for secondary physical education and athletic programs. This Saturday, our culinary program is hosting a chop classic competition, like the TV show, with other schools invited to take on our finest culinary students. We plan on making this an annual event to showcase our amazing culinary program. Finally, in Athletics, our girls' golf team won league and wanted to win the Central Section Division One CIF Championship. Our girls' water polo team just won their 22nd consecutive league championship, and I just heard that they just beat Buchanan in the semifinals and are now moving on to the finals for Division One CIF. Our varsity football team won league and their first CIF game this last Friday, and this Friday, they plan to travel up to Bakersfield, Mr. Grumble's alma mater, where we plan on beating them as well. Ben Pedrati was recently selected as the KSBY Academic Athlete of the Month for not only his excellence in basketball and track and field, but also in the classroom as well. We have six athletes that are signing their Athletic Consent Letters this Friday, those being Ane Smith with water polo at San Diego State, Berkeley Sinner with water polo at UC San Diego, Tessa Pettit with water polo as well for Villanova, Sophia Cardell with track and field at Davidson College in North Carolina, Jayden Valdez with softball for University of North Dakota, Gigi Gunasayan with golf for Point Loma. We would also like to thank our athletic boosters for helping us raise $140,000 to acquire two new vans to transport our amazing athletes. And I would like to thank you all so much for letting me speak at this meeting, and I can't wait to speak to you all in January. I hope you have a great Thanksgiving and a wonderful holiday season. Thank you so much.
Well done. And if you could send us an email about the Carol of the Arts program, so the board knows about that, because it's something we like to attend, okay? And lastly, we have from Lopez, Pacific View Academy, Robin DeJong.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Or good evening, Board and attendees. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you news and events from Lopez and Pacific View. Field trips. A group of Lopez students went to the Oceano Depot and Museum last week. They learned about the history of Oceano and train level in the West. They toured the train station and visited and relocated and restored... Or they visited a relocated and restored cabin that was once part of the DUNI community, a group of people who once lived in the Oceano Dunes from the late 1920s through 1940s and beyond. Lopez students are preparing to go on our annual field trip to Los Angeles on Saturday, December 7th. The trip is both curricular and extracurricular, and the students will be going to the Getty Museum, where the students will see many of the art collections that they have been learning about in both their art and history classes. Following the Getty Museum, students will be attending a Los Angeles Kings Game, where the students this year will be going down onto the ice to high-five the players as they come out after the intermission. Community connections. The Slow County Public Library visited English classes to share information about the variety of services they offer, such as homework help, live tutoring, ebooks, and trivia. They also kicked off a monthly book checkout program for both students and staff. The PVA Library recently received a new spinner bookshelf, thanks to a generous donation from the Napulmo Lions Club. Along with this addition, the library has undergone a major organizational transformation, sorry, and students are really enjoying the refreshed, welcoming atmosphere of the library. We continue to host our Questa and Allen Hancock reps onto our campus bi-weekly to help our students and at Lopez and PVA to get geared up for college. An Army representative is also, or has visited last week. Sports. Two weeks ago, four continuation high schools competed in a cornhole tournament hosted by Delta High School. Lopez has had three teams who participated. One team took first place, and the other took third. The next tournament will be basketball, and Lopez will host it in the PVA Gym in December. Spirit. Character Dress-Up Day was fun and exciting with students of all ages participating at both campuses. PVA hosted a trick-or-treat day where students were invited to come take pictures with a festive backdrop of a beautifully crafted balloon arch and visited each classroom to receive candies and other trinkets in exchange for a trick-or-treat. We were so happy to see each of the students in their creative costumes. Lopez campus also enjoyed a day of treats and dress-up. Lopez just hosted their Fall Community Day last Thursday from 12:00 to 12:30. These events are a fun time for students and staff to get to know each other and participate in activities together. This time, we played flag football, cornhole, sack races, and pumpkin bowling. Food services provided an Italian meal. That's it for Lopez and PVA. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Robin. I'm glad you brought up about the public library offering the online tutoring every day in English and in Spanish called Brain Views. You don't even need a library card to access it, and it goes up all the way to LSAT, SAT, and MCAT prep, and you can upload your essay, and they'll correct it and send it back to you. I think more and more teachers should be using that service. It's wonderful. All right, we're going to move on to, under our Communications tab, for items of interest from the board. From the board? Go ahead. Mr. Stewart?
Real quick, just because it was bench tonight, too, I had the pleasure to get into Mr. James and Ms. Kukuto's classroom at Central Coast New Tech to kick off the Do Something About It project. It's a project that I love. I visit them every year. This year was interesting because it was the day of them kicking it off, so I'm curious to see what projects they bring back for us to consider at the board level. It was fun.
Ms. Mayer?
I attended four listening tours, Paulding, Ocean View, Napulmo Elementary, Grover Heights, the renaming of Don Edison Fireside Room, and I also sat in on negotiations for CSCEA since our last meeting.
Been busy. Anyone else? Ms. Santos?
Yes. I too got to go to the Fireside Room. It was very emotional when you've been on the board for a while and you got to see this gentleman do what he did best, and to have something like that dedicated to him, it was emotional, and it was very, very nice.
Satisfying.
Satisfying for his family. And if you get to be there when the fire's going, better get. Also, I went on a listening tour to Grover Heights. And of course, if you're a sports fan, go Eagles. Good job. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, so I had a couple of things. I wanted to share the sad news about one of our former employees, Sherry Madell. She's a longtime teacher, the most recent from Napulmo Elementary. Her husband, Rod Walton, was a good teacher and administrator here at UCMR, and Sherry finally lost her battle with Parkinson's last week. So we mourned her and remember her well. And then I wanted to share a statement. And I'm going to date it, November 12th, 2024. I want to make it crystal clear to you tonight about my pledge to UCMR. I know that the tenor, tone, and values coming from our nation's capital will be changing in the next few months. As we reflect on how those changes may affect our students, our families, our community, and our world, it forces me to go forward with more resolve. This year, I tried to bring that resolve to our local decisions, but now we almost reflect how we will counter that change here at UCMR. For many years, I shared that what happens in Washington does affect us here at home, and it will. And I will tell you, the values, the commitments, the ideals, the mission of UCMR will not be changing. We will continue to engage, challenge, and inspire all students to be lifelong learners and achieve their full potential. We will be steadfast in our resolve to share hope for the future with our young students, to possess integrity and graciousness, to display honesty and cooperate and be part of a team. We will pride ourselves in the growth of innovation and learning in a variety of forms, with high levels of expectation for all. And we will continue to show empathy for others, acceptance of those different from ourselves, kindness to all, and support for the most vulnerable among us. UCMR students can be better on these fronts, and so can I. Probably you can too. If our nation cannot lead by example, we will. There will be no name-calling, no bullying, no selfish and cruel acts towards colleagues or students. We must be the change we hope to see in our community. One of our core values is resilience. We must help our UCMR families grow to be resilient. I will be there for them, and I hope you will join me in supporting our neighbors if they need our assistance. Please make a pledge to yourself today that whatever comes UCMR's way, we will stick to our convictions, so pride and kindness, and keep close to our ideals, our mission, and our core values, not others. Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay, then we'll move on. So we're going to move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Fassett?
Thank you, President Martin. So I also attended many of the same activities you always did as well. We settled with CSCEA last week, and we're excited about that. So on comes the 6-10 process, ratification from CSCEA, and then the board hopefully taking action in our December meeting. I also had the opportunity to attend the Transportation Coordinator's Retirement, Sharon Harwin. She's worked for our district for over 30 years. It has been a phenomenal asset to us, and we wish her luck in her new journey in life in retirement. And I got to also attend the Grover Heights Breakfast Buddies Program last week, and the PTA there has done a phenomenal job growing that program. The new NPR room looked amazing, and it was filled to the brim. Once upon a time, there was 30 participants in the program, and it has grown to over 300 participants under President Joey Morales's tenure there and our school's leadership. So phenomenal. And I also got to attend the mock WASC presentation at Napulmo High School, which was an extraordinary event. They preach college, career, and community readiness, and then underneath each one of those categories, they have a particular focus project that they're working on as a collective staff. And Mr. Deno invited in other schools within the district and some schools from outside the district, and they present on what they're doing as a school. And then they invite feedback, and it's kind of a vulnerable way to lead and a wonderful way to get feedback from other schools and other ideas. So kudos to him for that outstanding leadership, and that's it for me. Excellent. Thank you.
Well done. That is?
That's it.
Thank you so much. Okay, before we go to our Consent Calendar Action Items, I'm going to read my introductory comments, which I read at every meeting. A couple of announcements before we get started with the official meeting of the Board of Education, where the public is invited to observe and provide comments. Speaker cards are in the back lobby. They're yellow and blue, depending on when you would like to provide public comment. Our interpreter, Ms. Hernandez, please raise your hand. I saw her there, is here tonight if you need help with any interpreting from English to Spanish. On the last pages of our printed agenda are our decorum standards are stated. And thank you to our security team in the back. Guidance about public comment. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the public community to address the Board of Trustees in the meeting of the school board that is open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the board concerning any item on the agenda or any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Public comments are limited to at most three minutes and no more than 20 minutes total for one subject matter, under the discretion of the presiding officer. The board will not take any action or have discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. This is why the board does not respond during the public comment section of our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of the individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the board, or our staff. UCMR is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories, such as race, religion, disability, or sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Our students are watching and learning from us at all times, aren't they, Mrs. Way? Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of the meeting is not permissible. In accordance with recently enacted law, excessive disruption by any individual or group will result in the board president revoking the individual or group's privilege to address the board. Disruptive participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from the meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education, and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and stability of UCMR. All right, now we got that over. We're now moving on to the voting part of our meeting, the Consent Calendar Action Items 1 through 14. Does anyone have anything that they needed to pull for clarification? Seeing none, I'm going to offer to the audience. Does anyone in the audience want to make public comment on Items 1 through 14, the Consent Calendar? on items one through fourteen, the consent calendar for tonight's meeting? Seeing no movement in the audience, I'm gonna close it to public comment and bring it back to the board for comment.
Quickly, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, I'd love to comment on items number twelve and thirteen very quickly, just to express my thanks to Ms. Araya for her service, um, the County Committee on School District Organization. And my, my, my special thanks to Ms. O'Gorman and Mr. Gillespie for stepping up uh, and serving, representing the district at the county level. So.
I also had some comments. Um, I wanted to just comment on um, item number two is the ratification of expenditures where we did have um, nine million dollars worth of payroll for this past month. On item number three, uh, the miscellaneous donations. Fair Grove was the lucky recipient of a five thousand dollar donation from O and I Gallin. I don't know who they are, but I hope we're sending them a thank you note. And then under eleven, we have the approval of the memorandum of understanding between uh, Luciarum and all sorts of groups that are helping us do our winter break intercession program to the tune of a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from our ELOP funds. And then number fourteen, um, the daybreak uh, system, the daybreak offers um, online therapy for our students if they want it, or their families even, as our ongoing expansion of mental health services, which I think is fantastic. And um, some families, uh, they're very busy, so the online format, they can do it in the evening, they can do it in the early morning, it works very well. Did anyone else have comments from the board on items one through fourteen? Seeing none, I'll, I'll take a motion.
Move approval of consent calendar items one through fourteen.
Second? It's been moved by Stewart, second by Santos, to approve the consent calendar. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Bayer?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes six-zero. So we're moving on to item number fifteen, school-side presentation over at Brandy High School. The way the podium sits, I'm missing Principal Grumbles. He's right there behind it. There we go. Did you want to introduce?
Yes, this is Principal Grumbles from Oro Grande High School. He's gonna present us tonight on his plans. For, yeah, and we appreciate having him here tonight. He's a phenomenal principal. Well.
Awesome. Thank you guys for the opportunity. So I get the honor of presenting all of the great work that we're doing at AG tonight. Um, so thank you guys for that opportunity. Um, but before I start, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the people that are actually doing this work. Um, I get the easy job of presenting it, but the professionals that are here tonight, that are in the crowd, we've got Melina, we've got the counselors in the back, we've got some math teachers, and then we've got activities in health over there. Um, those professionals amongst many others are the ones that make this work possible. Um, they spend countless hours doing this work. So thank you guys for taking the time out of your minutes. So I think I told you guys, I think I've told some of you this story. When I moved here uh, eight years ago, I uh, was driving around town and I saw this sticker uh, on the backs of vehicles, and I'm like, what the heck is this thing? Um, and fast forward to come to find out, it's the AG logo and brand and, and the um, impact that this school has on this community is pretty powerful. And so this year, when we got uh, started on our PLC journey, uh, it became obvious that the mission statement that we had wasn't sufficient to capture what AG is. And so we went through a process of trying to look at and revamp our mission statement to keep it clear, succinct, uh, and to keep it straight to the point, and something to, that honestly could be thrown back at me in my face and say like, hey, is this Eagle pride and success for all students? So what we've come up with is that we honor our long and rich tradition of Eagle pride by fostering success for all students. And so that's something that I think has some stickiness, and I think that you guys will see highlighted in uh, the presentation tonight. So the presentation's gonna go over our single plan for student achievement. Um, I had our uh, uh, video pro, programming class uh, do some graphics for me. So there's graphics that highlight each one of these goals. These goals are aligned to the district's goals. Uh, so you'll see uh, AG has a student learning goal where we will meet or exceed learning targets uh, while practicing the four Cs. And so some of these are, these are all uh, anchored to data. Um, so our English department, led by the wonderful Ms. Wade here tonight. Um, you can see we've got a positive trend. We're sitting right at two out of every three students is passing the state test, which is well above the state average uh, for English language arts. So we're very proud of that. Uh, one of our goals is to continue to improve upon our already um, promising English practices. Same thing here in math, uh, led by Ms. Cordova back here in the back. Um, we've got a positive trajectory here. I adjusted the scale on the left-hand side so you could see the, the positive growth um, that we've got here, and we're sitting at roughly one out of every three students here. Um, and so this is a goal for us, specifically students with disabilities is a target area for us. Uh, so one of the things that we've done this year is uh, we restructured our special education department uh, to where they have their prep, but then they also have a planning release, planning release period. And so they have a common planning period on top of their prep period uh, that allows them to calibrate and um, adjust to, to meet the needs of students. So we're really excited about that. Um, it's been kind of a slow start. Uh, but I think it's a really promising practice where teachers have the opportunity to meet daily uh, on their goals and um, kind of in improved practices for our students. Uh, another area that we're showing positive growth is our LPAC proficiency. So we've had positive growth uh, in our overall proficiency as measured on the California School Dashboard. Um, I don't have this year's making progress number, um, but our, our trajectory is uh, positive in this area as well. Uh, this is for sixty-five EL students over the last couple of years. So we're staying pretty solid with sixty-five um, ELs. Um, but positive growth. Uh, and then finally on cast, we've got uh, some positive growth here. We got a little bit of a dip, uh, less than uh, a tenth of a percent, but um, we're, we're, we're making progress here as well. So in order to address these, what we're doing is we're aligning with the district's practices for PLCs. And so uh, as you know, AG is a large school, and to do any kind of initiative whole school is really challenging. So um, going through the PLC Academy last year, we sat down with the Guiding Coalition. Um, and we decided to create a rubric. And so that rubric is our guiding uh, roadmap for PLCs. And so what this allows us to do is to be uh, agile and meet the needs of each department individually. Instead of bringing everybody together in one location and trying to do PLCs all at once, what we've decided to do is to distribute uh, departments to go work on their own. And then they self-assess on this roadmap, and that allows us uh, for them to reflect on where they're at in the process and where they need to go next. And then it also allows us to kind of capture the, memorialize the process. So the teacher side of the rubric is on the four questions. What do we want students to know and be able to do? How will we know that they've got it? And then what do we do when they do have it? What do we do when they don't? And so we created uh, this rubric where departments self-assess. So here's some examples of that. The ELA department, uh, we did two of these self-assessments last year. We're coming up on our third one uh, on the minimum day next week. And so they self-assess, where are they on building pacing guides? Where are they on creating common formative assessments? Where are they on common grading criteria? Uh, and so they get to be vulnerable and honest, self-assess, and then make incremental goals uh, to move themselves in the PLC process. Here's an example of the math department. Who I should add, by the way, is doing incredible work. Our math department is really crushing it right now. They are really taking this uh, uh, data seriously, and um, I know that because I get to work with them every Monday morning. So I'm really proud of the work that they're doing. Here's our science department. So some, as you can see, some departments are a little bit farther along, and so that was the benefit of us doing it this way, is having a self-assessment rubric, is it allowed us to personalize the goals of each department based on where they're at in the process. Um, so we're really excited about that. It's something that's a hundred percent unique to AG. Um, and something that was created organically last year through the PLC Coaching Academy. Our next goal area is health and wellbeing. So this again lines with the district. We'll foster a culture that supports emotional health, safety, and wellbeing.